Good evening and welcome to the Proctor Select Board August 26, 2024 meeting. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. A motion will be in order to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. A motion would be in order for the August 12, 2024 Select Board Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Open public comment, we have no one here with us and no one's on. Or good stuff. It hasn't happened yet, but tomorrow night we have the back to school barbecue, which of course, Select Board members are invited to. It starts at five o'clock, it's at the high school, so if you want to stop by and get a hot dog, a piece of watermelon, a bag of chips. And then this Saturday is the Jimmy T Soccer Showcase where we play three games. I think girls play first. Girls play at 11:00 and then there's a 1:00 game and then the boys play at 3:00. So girls play MSJ and I'm not sure who the boys play. So, and it's $5 a card to get in and the money goes to youth soccer or the scholarship. So it's a nice way to kick off the soccer season. I feel like we're in soccer weather tonight, so. So anything else going on, anything else anybody wants to share?
We have one more concert coming up and we don't know if that'll happen because it keeps raining on Wednesdays. That is September 4th, so.
Weather Channel says it's gonna be nice.
Nice, okay, well that's good.
Yeah, let's hope they're right.
They said rain today, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Usually it's the opposite of what they say.
Let's hope it's nice tomorrow.
Yeah.
All right, bills are going around. And ground maintenance ordinance, so everybody, was that in everyone's pocket too?
No, I didn't include it because it's been included every time.
So that actually is gonna be, we'll have a rough draft for the next meeting, but if anybody has anything that they want to add, delete, or anything like that, you can send it to Judy and she can send it on to me and I'll update the draft.
So I made the updates from the last meeting, just with the, you know, the his, hers, changing those things. And then also just a couple of things that I had mentioned I changed, but I haven't heard from anybody else, so if anybody.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, you know, on page two, I would assume, you know, the municipal ticket.
Yep.
You know, and it says notice of violation is mailed by the Select Board. Should that be town manager and/or Select Board? You know, if we sign it, I could assume that it's from the Select Board, but if we don't sign them?
Right, well, it was that way before and then you guys gave me the authorization.
And so we want, so let's, can we just say town manager? Or by the town, or?
By the, yeah, the town?
Yeah, okay, something that would include the town manager.
Yeah, well, that incorporates it, but it seems.
And also on number one, civil action, again mailed by the Select Board.
Okay, so we'll just switch all those.
Okay.
All right, and then we'll have that for a rough draft at the September, for September meeting. Zoning regulations, so Judy made copies and everybody received that in their pocket, so that's really just a take and read through. And then I think what might be nice is after maybe the Planning Commission has kind of gone through and had time to redact or whatever, maybe we could have a joint meeting? And then just kind of share that way what it is they think that, you know, needs to be done or like that, before you get down too nitty gritty or whatever.
And, yeah, because I think their last meeting, they were, you know, focusing on the subdivision because of the Act 250 changes.
Yeah.
And I told them not to at this point. I said, just go through the whole thing and try to rewrite what's in there and kind of revamp it. It's way too thick.
Yeah.
In my opinion. And so I think it needs to be updated and I think the whole structure needs to be kind of more like reinforced. And yeah, streamlined so people get it, because I'm getting calls about people putting things up that shouldn't be put up and they don't have permits and nobody knows about it, you know, so I think it's just kind of trying to figure those things out. And then focus on the subdivision after so that we can be, you know, qualify, so.
And I think maybe even with the Planning Commission in concert with them, maybe we have another conversation maybe with Rutland Regional, because, I don't know, just you think about the Act 250, you think about a little bit what he said about the felling and like that. Like, I feel like maybe we might become like a little bit of anomaly with some of these things. We don't have like huge parcels.
Right.
And some of the parcels that we do have left are in the flood zone and is that or flood plain or on the fringe?
Right.
And I don't know, and maybe we do, maybe people do, but I don't know. Is that what we want to get into, is like felling that? Because that seems like, and I'm just throwing it out there, that that could become an issue. So I just think that maybe after they have a chance, if we could all just meet and have someone from Rutland Regional come and, you know, maybe do a little bit of a deeper dive? So we're all on the same page with them, just about that I think would be helpful. And I think would be helpful for them as well.
Oh, yeah, and I think the paper called me actually too and asked me about that, just because Fairhaven's kind of on the same, where we're at. They don't have subdivision in there, theirs either, in their regulations. So, and he asked me if it's really a waste of our time, you know, if it's not gonna happen until 2027, are we putting a lot of effort into this and not really reaping any benefit? And I said, no, I said, I don't, I think we have the people to put the effort into it. And I said, and I'd rather have it onboard, so if something did come up, it's in there and we would qualify, you know? So in most of the property, I think when I think of housing, isn't ours, it's owned by other people.
Sure.
So if that option's there for them and they don't have to go through all the, you know, red tape, then I think it would be beneficial to be intact, already in place when that kind of comes.
I just think, yeah, that, I mean, after having him come and listen and read the stuff, I just have, you know, a couple more questions and I'm sure the Planning Commission does too, after kind of doing setting, having more of a little bit of deep dive. And, you know, just to make sure that we understand what that means with respect to 250, you know, because it does have some benefits.
Right.
You know, and, you know, if you start talking about particular parcels and things like that, you know, is it advantageous to us to still have some kind of Act 250?
Right.
You know, oversight because?
It's hard because you have the Act 250 to limit growth and building and things like that, but then you have the governor saying we need 7,500 new homes in Rutland County. You know, and it's like.
Maybe some of the people they bust down here from Chittin and go.
So it's kind of like, you know, I mean, it's gonna fall on Rutland because Rutland's gonna have the biggest capacity to do that.
Sure.
And, you know, other towns, but you don't have a lot of property.
Well, no, and the stuff we have, like I said, you know, you think about like, kind of like the farms outside of that land, a lot of it is in floodplains.
A lot of it is.
And then the other pieces I guess you have are gonna be more like on the mountain, you know?
Yeah.
So, I don't know, I think it would just be good to have a joint meeting, have Rutland Regional come and just have a little more. And it was nice that he came and gave us a little, you know, like surfacy overview, but yeah, I think a lot more stuff's gonna come up as you go through this too, so.
I should actually have him come talk to the Planning Commission, like at their next meeting, just to kind of fill them in on, just to have them hear it firsthand from him.
Yeah, that would probably be helpful.
Sure. Check with them, I'm not sure.
Yeah, okay. The errors and omissions request is in your packet and if you had a chance to read through that, you see that none of it is change in value. Everything was pretty much the way things were recorded or spelling or something like that. So we just need a motion to approve the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 changes?
Motion to approve those five changes as listed.
And second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The facilities use policy was in your packet. Don't know if you had an opportunity to look over that, but that's also something that needs to be cleaned up and updated. There are some things in there that probably need to be, I must have taken mine out and wrote on it and not put it, I don't know. I was making changes. I think there are some pieces that need to be taken out when you look through what a policy is supposed to be. I just went back and read through VLCT just as a kind of review, but I don't know if people have had a chance, if you have, yep, Albert?
Yes, obligations of users. That's the second sentence, nor shall use of a facility create a nuisance or disturb the quiet enjoyment of anyone. Who makes that determination? You know, I just wonder, you know, reading this, they don't call the town manager and say that this is going on and?
I think that's supposed to be to help when the agreement comes in, so that you can determine, like if it's going to be, you know, I don't know, headbanger's ball at the rink, maybe that's not something we're going to have happen because that would not fall within the acceptable, you know, over there, because it's in a residential area, maybe something like that.
Yeah, and I think it's more that even if we allow certain things over there, that they have the understanding that there's, you know, you've got to keep it, you know, down. You've got to keep it kind of quiet.
That's my question, who's gonna make that determination? I mean, they've got the decipose up around 90, well, to them it's quiet, but.
Well, that, and that would be like in the agreement, usually there are places where you can make other comments, like, you know, music has to be on at 10 o'clock, no outside music after 9:00, you know, things like that.
So we'll catch that upfront.
Yeah, yeah.
And unfortunately, if they commit to it and being quiet, we won't know until the next day when someone complains that they weren't quiet, so it's kind of a.
You don't want to take calls at 11, 12 o'clock.
Right, yeah, they're still here.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I do think like the piece, the second kind of graph, facilities to which this policy applies, I think it's okay to list the policy, the facilities. I think the other piece, I don't think that has to be in here. I don't think user fees should be in policy and I'm not even sure. The maximum occupancy numbers are interesting.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, I think you have to think in the context of it's not just people in that place, but how did the people travel there? So if you were going to have that many people.
Yeah, 500 people now.
What do you think, where are they parking down here?
Yeah.
So I think maybe that needs to, there has to be some thought put to that with respect to parking and things like that.
I think there should be something in here though about a fee in the policy, that fees are charged for usage.
I think you could say that, but I think the fee should really be on the agreement.
Right, I don't, you don't have to send them in here, but I think it should be mentioned in here that there is a fee.
Yeah, I think that you can mention there's a fee and a deposit is required and I think it says in here about.
It says user rates.
Yeah, security deposit and about, doesn't it say something someplace about insurance or something as well?
Well, I kind of crossed out the security deposit, because up above it says, you know, putting in a user fee and/or a security deposit, and then down below it says there's an additional security deposit. So it's kind of redundant, it's like you can't say, okay, I want a security deposit, and down below it says a security deposit is required. So I think you either put it in the first one as a fee or a security deposit, or separate that and said there is a facility use, you know, and then you guys decide, do we want a security deposit as well?
And I don't even know, I think you could do a security deposit slash cleaning fee, like.
Right, so if there's like.
Yeah.
Like damage and all of a sudden we've got to pick up and clean up and it's some.
Yeah, but I, I mean, like just even at the school, when the gyms and things are like rented out, we have the fee for the custodian, I think it's like $40 an hour or something like that, that we charge if they're gonna be there because of bathrooms and things like that. And it's not, I don't think it's reasonable to think if somebody had a party over there, they're gonna clean the bathrooms before they leave.
Right.
So.
I mean, we could also have, and that's what we should do, like in the policy, if you are renting the rink, you know, do you, do you take it, you know, take out your garbage? Or do you, you know, things like that I think are important.
And that would, I guess that would be based on if you do, you know, security deposits slash cleaning trash fee. If you charge for that, then they're gonna leave it, so, something like that, so. But here's just another one for people to mark up.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, on the first page where you were talking about that table.
Yeah.
You know, following listed hours at the following listed user rates, you know, that one probably shouldn't be listed. It may be permit or application listed rates, because that's where you said the rates were gonna be listed.
Yeah, like we said, to leave the rates off, but put in the policy that there is a user fee.
It says listed user rates, you know, in that first sentence, you might want to just.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we can even say the facility use agreement will, you know, will contain what the fee is for a particular vendor, you know?
And I think, you know, you have to think like, is Olympus Pool, is that realistically something you're renting out outside of that being open?
Right.
So, because.
Yeah, I mean.
And I don't know if it's ever been, I can't think of it, and I know lots of people have had birthday parties up there or, I don't know, at the end of softball season or things like that, but it's usually when the facility is open. Because if you're gonna rent it out and then we're open, then we would be doing exactly what it says we shouldn't be doing, displacing.
Right.
So, I don't know, I guess that's something to think about here as we talk about it, but I would take it off.
It would be during the season, I mean, nobody's gonna have a party up there in November, so. So I would think it'd be during swimming season, so it would be, they're using it when the hours are open. I did have somebody reach out to me this year about having a party up there on a Sunday and that they would bring their own lifeguards.
Yeah, how does that work?
Well, that's just it, when I checked with the league, it was kind of like, we don't cover people with water. Anything with water, we're not gonna cover them if they're having a party. So I said, you're better off doing it like on a Saturday when the rink is, when the pool is open and we have lifeguards and, and giving us a heads up, because then we, we might charge you if we have to have an additional lifeguard on there.
Sure.
You know?
And I think maybe that becomes kind of like maybe a standalone, because maybe you're not gonna charge them to be up there, right, because we're open?
Right, right.
But if we had to have another lifeguard based on your number, maybe we're gonna charge you $50.
Right.
Something like that. So that, that might be something that should just kind of be pulled out and written a little differently, I think.
Doesn't that sunrise to sunset seem a little?
Excessive?
Yeah. I mean, sunrise at six in the morning. Yeah, sunset at nine at night.
Yeah, well, and I think you have to.
Well, that's saying.
Because sunrise changes as the season turns and months progress, you know, that may be why they chose sunrise. Well, there's hours.
It doesn't hurt to have it in there and not.
Hours, but yeah, I mean, there is hours, actual hours, right, that it's open.
Well, I mean, like Beaver Pond, if they want to use that, it's open dawn to dusk, you know, so.
The pool is closed, I mean, it's closed in the bucket.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's hours that it's actually open and closed.
Right, right.
And I think, but I think even like the youth league and the Village Green and like that, I mean, we have to have timeframes that are reasonable, because like the youth league fields, you're in a residential area.
Right.
So we have to be, you know, good neighbors, skating rink also. So maybe we just kind of, you know, think about that, maybe, maybe they're 10 to, you know, seven or something like that, I don't know.
They, I did have someone reach out to me about having a wedding at Beaver Pond. And I called them back, but the number, I got somebody else and she had no idea what I was talking about, so then I was like, okay. And then they never reached back out to me again, so, I don't know.
So like a wedding and a party or just?
They didn't say, they were very, in fact, when they arrived, I think they were driving, because they kept cutting in and out kind of, and I kept getting bits and pieces and I kept trying, I kept playing it for that last digit of the number. And the number called wasn't that number, so, I don't know, but.
I mean, because I think people, we had somebody get married on the bridge a few months ago. I mean, it's like.
I mean, if they want to go to the picnic area and get married.
I was gonna say, like, I mean, how like restricted do we want to be if someone decides they want to?
Yeah, well, at least they checked on it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think it's different if you're gonna have, you know, 30 people up there or something, sure, but. Yeah, I mean, I don't think we have to get too overly. Okay, so if people want to just kind of work on that and, you know, if you highlight stuff or have changes, you want to send it to Judy or bring it in, make a copy, she can scan that to me, then we can work on that as well. All right, a motion would be in order to go into the Board of Water Commissioners at 6:21.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so I sent the schedule around, it just needs a signature.
So we did approve that a while back, the rates.
2:24.
It's just that we need a paper trail for auditors that we have new rates and what they are, even though they are the same, so. That's why that was included.
All right, and did you want to talk about delinquencies or?
Um, yeah, so I only had one, one person on duty today. So he had four water lines that we need shut off, because they were delinquent and they broke their agreement. And I told him I'll wait until tomorrow when he had somebody to go with him. I don't like them, I don't like them working alone and I don't like them doing those things by themselves. So I'd rather have somebody else with them, so they're gonna do those tomorrow, four of them. And then I gave him a new list of 35, 35 delinquencies, which totaled over $58,000 and.
Oh, 58, yeah.
And I highlighted the top, top tier ones first, and they're gonna go, starting to go around now and do, look for curb stops.
Okay, so we're kind of dwindling on time to be able to.
Yeah.
Have any in the past that have been shut off been turned back on because they've paid?
There was one that we shut off and they, they called and came running down and paid, so. And that was before, I think, an agreement was made. These are like agreements made and broken, so we actually have the right to go shut them off without any further notice. And if they want it turned on, they have to pay it in full.
But no, I was just wondering about people that have had them shut off, have they come forward to try and reimplement or repay?
Well, we haven't shut them off, we've had like one that we actually shut off. Most have come in once the guys are up there.
Okay, so actually we've only shut off one?
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, we've gone out and shut off, they've gone out to shut off several and all of those people have come in and made agreements.
Okay.
So the first, like 36 people I gave them, everyone made an agreement, or we couldn't shut them off because of tenants.
Yeah, good.
So, and these four have fallen back off the agreement, so.
So are we letting them, like they come in and pay, are we letting them create a new agreement then?
No, if they, if they come in and make an agreement and they fail on it, then we shut their water off.
Right, so then.
They have come in and paid in full, so there is no more agreement.
Okay, all right, okay, great. Okay, anything else?
No, it's probably in my managers report, but they did the hydrant flushing last week.
Yeah.
So those were all done.
Are there any issues with?
Nope, nothing that I heard of, no.
Vegetation, where they're located, changes?
No, no reports back to me of any problems at all.
All right, a motion would be in order at 6:24 to leave Board of Water Commissioners and enter the Board of Sewer Commissioners.
Motion to.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and the same sheet is going around with the water for the sewer for the same reasons? And anything else in sewer, anything about lagoons or anything like that?
Nothing further on that, just waiting for them in the next step of designing the wastewater treatment plant and whatever.
And so do they still think we're like on plan to vote on this for March?
I think so, yeah.
I guess I just feel like we need to be having more conversation with people out there, rather than just in March, we're gonna vote on this like huge number.
Right.
Because I don't feel like people have any idea that.
Right, well, I mean.
That's happening.
Oh, no, they probably don't, but I mean, I don't think we have any, I don't think people are well informed on any wastewater or water.
No, but when you're asking people to vote yes on something, I guess, I don't know, I just thought kind of by this, or maybe by mid-October or something, we'd have information to kind of have them come either electronically or even here and share, so we could put something together and put it on the website and just start making people a little more aware of it. I feel like when we were doing the water project, that there was a lot more kind of conversation and information going on, so.
First of all, nobody joins our meetings, so we could have a Zoom and no one will be here, so they're not gonna be informed that way. We put it on the website, nobody goes on our website, so there's gotta be either an informational meeting.
Well, sometimes though, where interesting enough, I see the Herald on a slow day wants to reiterate things that have happened at the meetings.
And I mean, we could do that, I can reach out to Keith and say, hey, can you, you know, just do a little blurb, this is what we're trying to do?
Maybe, maybe that would be great, just having him interview you and, you know, somebody from A&E or something and just kind of explain the project, this is like the timeframe.
Right.
And we're kind of, you know, we're thinking we're gonna vote on, you know, have this bond vote in March, because, you know, it's a lot of work to do and not, and set ourselves up for failure.
Right, well, I mean, the only other alternative is having a special town meeting.
Well, and people don't really come out for that.
I know, so you kind of go, all right, we have a meeting and all of a sudden you're voting on this and people are upset because they haven't heard about it, but.
Right, so I'm just trying to be a little, you know.
Right, I mean, if we could, I mean, we could post things and, you know, I could, I could make up a flyer.
Yeah, I think it might be nice though, if you, he could speak to you about the project, why we are, where we, where we are, and then if he could speak to one of the guys that had come, you know, about like, this is where we are, this is what we're doing and this is what's necessitated us doing this, you know, these lagoons have a life and, you know.
You know what would be kind of nice is to have like a Public Works Facebook page that people can't comment on?
Yeah.
Because we did that, like I said, you can't put comments on it, but you could put news out there. So you can say, hey, we're paving this today, road's closed, we're doing this. You know, so people are always updated, because people just tend to go to social media first for their news.
Yeah, we can't probably create.
But I just think that might be something that, you know, like with the hydrant flushing, you know, I put it on the web, I put it places and people, they never go on the website, I don't think.
Yeah, I put it on the Facebook page.
Thank you, Albert.
Is there a counter on the website, do you know how many people go to it?
I don't know if that's managed through him.
No, sometimes you can just put a counter at the bottom to say.
Right, yeah, but I don't know, it would be nice, you know, even like, I used to love when the town had the old bulletin boards. Because people read those, you know? I mean, because I think at the, at the post office, there's so much stuff on that bulletin board that everything is gets.
Probably some of it is old.
Oh, yeah, like when I go to take my stuff down, I'm just like, you know, here's an event.
You gotta dig through the file to find that.
I know, seriously.
Yeah, but I do think maybe just have an A&E and you and call Keith or somebody. And, you know, if we could just get something out there, but maybe even just put it on his radar, so he knows there's something, you know, we're planning so.
Yeah.
You know, and maybe even, who's the guy at the reporter, Stephen Jupiter is the, you know, if we have, you know, stuff, we can send to him, because a lot of people seem to read the reporter, so.
Oh, yeah, and even like Killington, The Mountain Times?
Yeah.
They put, they, they have a lot of information in that paper.
Yeah.
And I can reach out to them and say, can you put something in, because people read it. And, you know, they'll put stuff about Rutland O'Kemo, everything, so.
Yeah, I just think getting it out there, just so, I mean, whether people read it or not, that's on them. But at least we have taken the initiative to share the information, to try to inform the public, to let them know why it's happening and what it is. So when everybody shows up in March, they just don't have a big, you know, rubber nose stamp, so.
Well, it just sounds like the communication, the ways to communicate is, there's so many ways to communicate, whether it's social media or by TV, by mail, by radio.
Right.
The best way, it's like we're struggling with the best way to communicate with the owner.
The best way, it's like we're struggling with the best way to communicate with the owner, people of the town.
Well, and. And least expensive way to.
Yeah.
Well, right, I don't know if it's, you know, just by mail, if it's, if it's.
Yeah, I don't know.
Put something in.
Do we have anything going out soon for, I mean?
Well, we have the tax and the water.
Yeah, you just set the bills out, so.
Yeah.
And we don't, the water thing doesn't come till spring, right?
Annual report, be too late.
Yeah.
Well, it's not too late, I mean, it's.
Should we be sending something out maybe twice a year to update the residents of the town, fearless, as a new practice, you know, so they can expect something maybe in, you know, the spring and fall.
October or something.
We'll just send the water results out.
Something, just some information over here.
We could just share projects that we've completed, things that are, you know, like.
Coming up.
Yeah, you could like the paving project, sidewalk, this is what's coming up.
Even if it was maybe twice a year, even once a year, give a list, but everybody gets it at the same time.
Right.
And maybe put like the select board meetings on there again and planning commission when they meet and stuff like that, so.
It's a lot of pertinent information that a lot of people don't know what's going on.
Right.
They could read it right on and say, oh, I never knew this was actually happening, or this is the town.
Yeah.
So you can't say they don't know about it.
Right.
Yeah, there's a lot of new people in town.
Right, so at this point, this is a good point, at that time, when it actually comes up, people are gonna, you know, they're gonna say, well, why didn't you tell us? How come, you know, you don't want it to be a surprise.
Yeah, I actually thought about um trying to do a newsletter, you know, that went out quarterly.
Yeah.
Um, just, you know, some brief like information about the town, but then also, you know, good stuff too, kind of including that and there.
Yeah, like Rowland Town does the circle on um.
Yeah.
With the school and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
Cause I've done those other places, you know, and people like it, you know, they.
Yeah.
It's good information, people like to read things like that, they like to know what's going on.
Plus, I also used to ask people if they wanted to contribute something, you know, like even, if, if it's not an article, even like a, a recipe, you know, like things like that, just to get people involved and more like, kind of user friendly, but.
Everybody would get it and it would be, I think.
Right.
You know, possible, productive, prepared to a lot of.
Yeah, cause a lot of people don't get like water bills, tax bills, because they're renters.
Right.
So they're not getting that information, they're not getting any, this, this way they'd get information, because they live in the property, so.
Information, yeah, and they may have ideas.
Yeah.
You know, people may read it and say, hey, I got an idea, you know, and it's something that can be brought to the table now.
Yeah, we could start out small, just kind of listing projects that we've completed.
Doesn't have to be like.
Yeah, it's a one pager with some information, yeah.
A lot of times you get feedback from, you know, the people that it actually concerns.
Right.
Yeah.
Positive thing, because now you're getting their input, and it may help, you know, resolve an issue, it may help, let us know what they actually need.
Right.
Or want.
And I could, yeah, like I could start out with like a newsletter brief that's a one pager and blocked with information, and then we could just fold it and addresses on, not even use envelopes, you know, so it's a trifold.
Yeah, I think just one page and flip it, tap, tape it and go it, do it to resident, yeah, I think that's a great idea.
That'd be fun.
Well, you can add, like you said, positive things, you can add, you know.
No, I think like you would do the sidewalk, you would do the paving, you could do the concerts, you could do.
Definitely. Do a contest for what you could call the newsletter.
Oh, you could, there you go, but then you could talk about upcoming projects, you know, and, you know, maybe you could highlight some, you know, one of the, introduce the high uh DPW or things like that too.
You know, the water, right, you put a little clip in there.
Yeah.
I don't know, like if the school sends things out to parents, you know, even giving them a bunch of copies to give, send home with their kids.
We could, but most everything we do is electronic, yeah.
Well, I could, I can share it with them, I mean, they're good about.
Their kids.
Their kids wouldn't deliver or something, but children.
That's why things, yeah.
The elementary school is great, that'd keep me in the loop on everything that's going on.
Yeah.
But I could share it with her.
If we started, maybe we could start doing that, incorporate the schools, you know.
Okay.
Well, even, we have, what, the Fall Festival coming up, right, at some point, I don't know if there's an information, could something be prepared?
Yeah, we put flyers out about that, yeah.
Yeah, we do Facebook posts on that mostly.
There for, you know, the folks that are visiting.
Right.
Yeah, that, that'll go in like the Brandon Report or in places like that, so.
But, but I mean, like at the event itself.
Oh, I see, oh, I got you, I missed that.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's, it's just about.
Yeah, no, I like that idea, I think that's good.
All right.
But listen, I think we, anything, we could try something.
What's that?
Get a volunteer to man the table, the information table.
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds great.
Yeah, which one do you want to volunteer?
Might be a good thing.
Jay's idea.
I'd be a little busy that day.
Great, I could man it too, I don't mind. I'd rather man it than have the bossy house. I know.
All right, so a motion would be in order to move out of the Board of Sewer Commissioners.
Motion to do so.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, you're the unanimous. So the sheriff's report is in your packet, that was a little confusing, because it was like the same thing twice. At least mine is, is it just mine?
No, it wasn't.
Okay, cause I'm like reading through this and I'm like, isn't that weird? They were the same place, the.
The first page, the first two pages are identical, the others are okay though.
No, they're the same too.
I only have four pages.
Like this is the same, see these are all the same as this.
Yeah.
I don't know why.
I only have these two the same, and then the sort of the one, two, three pages that I have.
Yeah, but these are the same, see how this is five, five, six, five, four, six, four, 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 four. I, I'm not trying to be.
Oh, no, cause I normally, I, I pull up the report and then I copy it onto a word, so I can try to make it look better.
Yeah, I don't know why, it was just because I'm looking like, hmm.
And they are very, um, like when I go in, I usually do from the Thursday of the last, so like say, the Thursday before the last Monday meeting, and I pull that all the way up to the day I print these, and it's usually lacking a whole week of reporting.
Oh, yeah.
So I don't know if they just don't, if they plug them in like at the end of the week or what they do, so, I thought they were just going in.
It was nice to see that they did listen to you and they've kind of been up around Beaver Pond, being a little more attentive to that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that was nice to read.
And I did email them about um North Street.
Yeah.
So I told them to have their officers go there, and then the school too, for the first day, they said they were meeting, the day I emailed them, they were all meeting to do the school schedule.
Okay, great, that's awesome, and it's great, the guys have done all the stop bars and crosswalks, so that looks great.
The five-way looks really good, I think.
Yeah, it looks, yeah, everything looks really ready to go, so it's nice. All right, managers' report.
Okay, so um sidewalk on South Street is completed, we did the final walkthrough on August twentieth. There's a couple of permanent easements that need to be drawn up on thirty-nine and forty-five South Street, Saint Dominic's and what was the old rectory. So when we did the walkthrough, there is a marker that belongs to um the rectory, and when they bought that house, they had a surveyor come in and survey the property, and the marker was right, was on the very edge of the property. When we put the sidewalk in, the sidewalk was like about ten, twelve inches over, and so they moved the marker into the sidewalk to make it exactly, so now, I, I wasn't really happy with um the state or the engineers, because I said, first of all, this should have been caught up front, not after we've done the sidewalk. I said, you should have realized that there was a marker and that our sidewalk was gonna be one foot over it.
Yeah.
And so they questioned about the road, they said, well, maybe over time, the road has moved um or gotten wider, so it's brought the sidewalk over, and I said, the sidewalk's wider. I said, the sidewalk's the same as it was, but we made it a foot wider.
Yeah.
So it's the sidewalk that created, and they're like, oh, yeah.
But wait, did they, did they physically move the marker?
Yeah, well, the marker, the guy came out, because he showed them in the house, and they had to take the mark, they, they, they lifted the marker up when they were digging the sidewalk.
Isn't that like a hundred percent illegal to move property?
Well, he couldn't help it, he dug it up, he didn't know it was there, because he was digging up the new sidewalk.
Oh, as he was digging, dug it up, got it, got it.
And so um he went out and bought a brand-new brass.
Yeah.
Marker and stuff, and they laid it in there, so now the state is concerned that um they're, they need permanent easements instead of temporary easements for doing the work, that we're always gonna have to have that easement to get, you know, because it's on their property, the sidewalk. So if something happens to the sidewalk, we don't have to go out and get another easement, we've got it.
So is the sidewalk a foot on their property, the whole length of their property then?
No, because the property, it kind of angles, so when you get down to the next marker, the marker's like off the sidewalk. Yeah.
But it's Saint Dominic's and the rectory, or just primarily the rectory?
We pulled the map, I found the maps actually, which is amazing, and so, and um the survey was done, and I sent it to the engineers, but they said, the numbers don't match up, like the angles and the foot, footage that they have, so they're sending it to their surveyor to look at it, and I said, well, just, I said, I, we're not, it's not gonna be on the town, this isn't gonna be on our dime, I said, because this should have been caught up front, so, they said, oh, no, 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 it won't, it won't, it'll be, you know, covered by the grant and stuff.
But who's doing the work to?
Well, they're, the engineers survey it, they're gonna try to see where it is and then.
So it's not on you to have to do?
No, no, they are.
Well, that's good, that's good.
And also, I think Saint Dominic also angles, so it's, it's like, it's almost like it's that one portion between the two, kind of, so.
All right, well, at least they're gonna figure it out, right?
Yeah, I wonder if they'll purchase, you know, pay them for the foot and.
No, I think they'll just get an easement, because it's gonna be more than a foot, if it runs part of their land and then Saint Dominic's.
That's, you know, I mean, it's, if you're measuring, that's three square feet total.
Right, but then you got the church that could be twenty square feet, you know?
Yeah.
So, and I think the church would be fine giving us an easement.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think the people will be too, I don't think, they didn't seem like they.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they did.
I mean, it wasn't done by any, oh, oh, or anything, we're not trying to.
No, no, not at all.
Yeah, but they did find a water shut off in the, in the sidewalk too.
Oh, they didn't.
I understand.
Oh.
Oh, well, wouldn't they have moved it?
Huh?
They didn't move it?
Yeah, they did keep it, so it's apparently in the sidewalk, I gotta stop and see.
They didn't say anything to me about that, in the walkthrough.
Yeah, that's what I.
No, they didn't say anything about a water shut off, either that sidewalk.
Covered it with the concrete, covered over it, Bruce?
No, but with the new sidewalk, it must have been approached on the, on that shut off, so they just, apparently, there's a, I thi, I've seen it with driving by, but I haven't actually stopped and.
Where was it, Bruce?
Um, I, in the house, the, the old rectory.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's strange, I'll double check on that though.
Yeah, or it might have been at Saint Dominic's, uh, this is something I heard.
Okay.
Couple of weeks ago, two or three weeks ago.
Okay, double check. All right, um, I already mentioned the last concert, um, mosquito district update from Albert and elected officials, everybody got that email, I think?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and I reached out to them again, because I've had some complaints about mosquitoes, so um I reached out to them about, it was very confusing, the email, on South Street, someone complained about lots of mosquitoes up on the old, you know, parallel to Route Three, the South Street that goes around up there, um, that they're really bad, and I noticed other people started saying, yeah, some, this last week, they've been bad.
This weekend they were bad.
And when I met with the fire department today, over there with the engineers, there were a lot of bugs, it was bizarre, it was like they haven't been anywhere in the last sun. So I reached out to them, and he's, he told me at the mosquito district that they've sprayed Proctor twice, and I said, I think they've only sprayed them once, and he said, no, twice. And then when I said about South Street, he said, yeah, we do South Street, but then he called it a Smith Street, and I was like, no, it's South Street. And I said, it's a tail end going out of Proctor, so he said, no, they said they sprayed twice, I said, I do not believe.
Let's get the date on that, because half this town has cameras, it'll be easy enough to.
I don't believe they.
That's with the new spraying electronic equipment they've got, that records all of that stuff, so, it's downloaded, so we should be able to see from those records.
Right.
And those are the records that are sent to the state, and so.
Well, I, I'd be interested to know the date of that.
And at our last meeting, the, the operations coordinator did tell Bruce and I and Tom that they did spray twice in Proctor.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's amazing, because before they said, we didn't have enough mosquitoes to spray, and now they've sprayed twice, so.
I did reach out to see if they're spraying again, just this season, but I had.
Yeah, I don't know what the.
Or they've sprayed one and a half, because they didn't spray the whole town the first time they came, so.
Yeah, they had a truck right down with the.
All right, um, I contacted um Twozo Services for fence, uh fence repairs up at the pool, because the tree fell down and hit the fence in a couple of spots, so.
Yeah, it's pretty bad.
Probably won't get to it till spring though, and I said, well, that's all right, I mean, the pool's drained once winter comes and.
Yeah.
We did have another tree fall after that too, but it did hit the fence. Okay, um, let's see, elections had very low turnout, including mail-in ballots, only a hundred voters total.
And now they're mailing out for November, everyone's getting a ballot mailed out, right?
I believe so.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah, we have ballots and ballot.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's true, someone asked the other day, and I was like, I'm pretty sure that's what they said downstairs, so.
Yeah.
But they haven't like really promoted that either, people don't even realize that.
No, what, because they did it once before, they think they'll just keep doing it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Were you gonna ask something, Bruce? I thought you were gonna ask a question.
Yeah, no, no.
Um, let's see, okay, so the boring was done today over at the fire department. Um, it was rescheduled from last week, because they were backed up with work, so they came today, did the boring, they did, um, actually.
Where'd they put the fire trucks, where they did it?
They're in the town garage.
Oh, oh, I wondered where they were, I didn't see them anyplace, like I'm, I was thinking they would be parked over here or something.
Okay, I had them, oh, here, this right here, so um, so I went over this morning, met with them when they were there, and then I went over in the afternoon too, when they were completing it, and they did two born, um, one on the north end, one on the south end. Um, the one on the south end, they got down twenty-three feet, they actually got down, um, I think it was, let's see, after eleven feet, they hit solid. So the first um few feet that they went down was all um wood, like rutted wood, some, it looked like charcoal in there and stuff, and it was all soil, sand, everything, so it went right down, then they hit rock, then they swapped drills and went down further and got through that until they couldn't go any further. Um, and so that, they took samples, so it's like little mason jars, and they had like a dozen of them, and they took samples of every, every core that they pulled out and stuff, so they could keep track of it. Um, and then the, uh, the north end, they drilled down, I believe it was five feet, and he said, that, that's, that side was shallow and soft, um, and he said, they went down and then they hit ledge and they bored, I believe, down to fourteen feet total there. So, oh, they only got fourteen feet down on the north end and twenty-three feet down on the south end, because there was so much more rock on the north end, which I believe the ledge from up back actually comes down into the property.
Yeah.
So what they're, they're done boring, because they feel they have enough information to go off of in this. And then what they'll do, they're gonna call me tomorrow and let me know if the fire trucks can go back in or not, and then they'll do a summary of everything they found and with some of their opinions and what options we might have. Um, they did talk about, you know, the thing is, what's in the fire station, like underneath the dirt, the wood and all that, is, we're guessing, is actually out to the street almost too, because the town office that was there before, they called it the town hall, they um, um, years ago was almost out to the sidewalk, and even when the playhouse was there, it was much further out, because it was on the drawing, I actually found a drawing from back then, and it was actually parallel to this building right here, the front steps came equal to this one.
Yeah.
So, that's why the side, the driveway also keeps cracking and stuff, so.
Yeah.
Um, the, the engineer said, the problem with, like, if we just took that whole flooring out to restructure it, he said, it's, the walls around it aren't gonna be supported, so you'd almost have to take the whole building down. But he said, there might be options to try to, you know, do something else, if they could do more research to figure out, if there's something that'd be filled in there or how they do it, so I talked to Josh this afternoon, and we're just getting, once we get those reports, we'll start looking at other options, you know, can we put the trucks in there?
Yeah. Yeah.
Is it gonna be fixed, huh, what's the cost gonna be, can we sell the property, build something else, or do a short-term repair? Um, I mean, it's been over forty-five years since it was built, so it's obviously, you know.
Well, it's had, you've had issues pretty much the whole, I mean, how many times has the apron been done, twice?
Twice, yeah.
Yep, and there was also a pipe that was laid in there for, um, steam, a steam pipe that was placed, but they never used it. But it came in from the north end, and then angled like a V to the back end, and then from there to the south end, so it's a V. And then right now on the south end, there's a crack that goes almost parallel to where that pipe is. So the engineer said that possibly could be causing problems too, so, um.
But the biggest shift was on the north end of the building.
Yeah, that's what we thought was weird, cause the biggest shift's on the north end, and that was the most rock and solid, and the other end was totally different. But it, like, they said they were backing the trucks in the other day, and you could almost see the concrete kind of like, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
So, it's, it's definitely, like, if you stand at the south end or north end, and you look from south to north. You, the floor actually warps, like it goes like that. Yeah, it, there's a definite difference, so, so I'll wait to see what they say tomorrow, and hopefully it's something good.
Yeah, but all that burned stuff that was from the old.
Yeah.
Company store.
Right, yeah, so that, yeah, cause that, the, um, they tore down the building that was there before. In nineteen forty-five, I think it was, where the supermarket is now, so, these are really old drawings. Like, they're not engineered drawings, they're like real drawings, like somebody sat down and actually took a, you know, like drew them.
Alright, it sounds like it'll.
But I think the good, there's nothing good about it, but I think as far as funding it, I think there's more opportunity for grant funding for like fire. Stations and things like that, I think that there might be some opportunity out there for that, to cover costs, so.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna look into that too.
Well, we'll see what they come back with, you know.
Alright, let's see what else to have, um, oh, auction took place, um, August sixteenth at ninety-two, ninety-four North Street. Think I shared that with you before, did I? Um, the second mortgage holder purchased it for ninety-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars.
That seems like a lot.
Sent out fuel bids, August fourteenth, they're due by four P M. on September ninth, so we'll read them at that meeting that night. Um, sent a letter to Bigfoot Ventures regarding sixty-one main for not addressing the rocks falling onto the pedestrian walkway. Um, would, sent them the maintenance ordinance which are, which they are violating, so I haven't heard back from them. So I'm gonna keep hounding them, and I've act- actually asked someone to go look at it, um. Ricky Reed to see what his opinion is on how that can be repaired. I hate to do it and then put a lien on a property, because, you know, with Westery already coming out of our pockets, it's.
Yeah.
But these people have to be liable for their properties that they purchased.
Well, yeah, and then, um, yeah, along the Lutheran Church over there too.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's, those rocks have been in the road there too, so that, that's even a little more of a concern with traffic.
I did reach out about traffic radar signs for, um, Goran Bridge, North Street area and Route Three coming from the east. So I haven't heard back on that, um.
So is that getting the one from the sheriff, just borrowing it, you mean?
Yeah, or not the permanent one, yeah, um, and then, I don't know if you noticed, the center lines were painted.
Yeah.
Too, so, I don't know why they painted, I wish they had reached out to me and waited till we paved. They're paving, they'll have to come back and paint them again, so.
Yeah.
At least they did it, so.
Alright, any questions for Judy? Alright, thank you, any other old or new business to come before the board? Alright, then a motion would be in order at six fifty-five. The premature general knowledge regarding the town's status with personal seasonal and part-time. Employees contracts would clearly put the town into substantial disadvantage because of slick board risk. Disclosing future strategy, um, if it discusses the proposed contract terms in public. Uh, motion would be in order to move into executive session at six fifty-five.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, you need an emcee, we'll take like a five-minute break here.